The City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, March 6, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner O'Rourke. Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Rourke, she's ill tonight, she's got the flu, we didn't want her here. Nobody's sick.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, item four, approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On to five, presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none this evening. We're on to number six for public comment, and I'm going to read the statement according to our new policy. This is the time for public comment, any member of the public may address the city commission on any topic. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and be heard. No commissioner, department head, or city staff will respond. City manager will follow up on the public comments as necessary. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please direct all comments to me as the meeting chair. Please refrain from the use of profanity, and please do not direct any comments to any other members of the public. Is there anybody who'd like to speak?
Hello, friends, John Sapienza, 126 Jefferson Street. My heart's pounding, I'm a terrible speaker, wish I could just say. I'm here to say that all politics are local, and then I'm here to ring the alarm bell about what's going on in our country. For 65 years of my life, our country has been fighting aggression, Russian aggression, one way or another, in a Cold War. And now we've flipped sides in the last week or so, supporting Russia. And it's terrible, and this has to change, and our commissioner, I'm sorry, our representative, Lisa McLean, has been totally supportive of Donald Trump, and she's been climbing up the MAGA ladder by carrying his water and lying for him. Now, she is a very nice person, she's just misinformed, like my brothers and sisters. What she has done is, when she got on, what, first weeks on the job, watched the Capitol get sacked, and that night refused to certify the election of Joe Biden. And then, some couple months later, she refused to hold Donald Trump responsible. Our representative, so now we have Donald Trump in office again, thank you, Lisa McLean. That's one of the three things I wanted, four things I wanted to get to. I want to switch topics really quickly, I gotta say something, being a maintenance man my whole life, plumber, I've done water mains. When a crew is outside, the worst possible job you can ever have is to fix a water main when it's below freezing outside. You're standing in water, you're in a ditch, understand that every water line is at least five feet down, and you might think, oh, five feet, no big deal. Well, the problem is, you gotta get under the water line, so now you're digging six feet. Now you're in a trench that's up to your head, or on top of your head, and you think, oh, no big deal. Well, the problem is, that man has to get on his knees to fix the water line. Okay, so now he's got four feet of earth over his head, and you want to talk about a scary situation, I've been there. Now, you got a couple guys standing around to watch that man in the hole. My, look at these guys standing around, those guys are there to save his life. More people die doing that job, I think, than any other excavating job. You're gonna go out and argue with some guys that are directing traffic? Well, the thing is, those guys are there to run over and help if this thing caves in on these, on this guy, to help the two guys that are digging them out now, and they call this guy over to come help them. So I understand the frustration, but understand the job of getting in a hole like that, and then you might have a little more sympathy. And the third thing I wanted to get to. The lot that I built my pavilion on. I mean, I can tell you horror stories for 26 years in this city, going through all kinds of stuff, but it would take me, I could write a book about it. But let's just talk about my lot there, where I built my pavilion. 10 years before I built the pavilion, 15 years, the city would dump piles of snow on there, mountains of snow, you've seen them around town, and they cleared the streets, and they drove over it with a snow truck. And they crushed up the sidewalk in the process, now I've seen Rick Ames do it, I've seen five different guys, and Hubby, and Mike Getrich, I can tell you that Mike Getrich at least 40 times drove over that sidewalk with a snow truck, 40 times. Hubby and plenty of other guys, there's five guys. The city has always refused to do anything about helping to fix that sidewalk. I've asked for 10 years now. And it's really a shame, because I'm liable when anybody gets hurt on that property, and they just assume that I'm gonna take on all liability. Well, I'm not, because I didn't destroy that sidewalk, that's an eight-inch-thick slab, the only way that gets crushed is with a 20-inch snow truck. Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, approval of the minutes, can I have a motion to approve city commission meeting minutes of February 20, 2025?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to eight, consent agenda, we have eight, A, the special event permit for the spring fling, and B, the special event permit for the Marine City High School box city. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through B as presented.
Making motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A and B.
Support.
Motion to support, you have roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to nine, for items removed from consent agenda, we have none, so we'll go to 10 for financial business. 10A is expenditures, including payroll, of $819,284.05. I have a motion to approve those expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $819,284.05.
Making motion, we approve it, expenditures, including payroll, for $819,284.05.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to indicate Katie's sick tonight, but I can tell you, if you looked at that closely, you'll see a significant portion of that is transfers for tax purposes at this time of year. So you'll see that affect a couple different, for our financial report, you'll see larger-than-usual numbers, and that's all the transfer of different taxes collected.
Thank you. No other discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we have 10B for authorization of reinvestment. City manager, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, if you recall, our last meeting, John was here and gave us a presentation on the pension system and off the healthcare system, and we talked a little bit in terms of our investment. I will tell you, we'll be bringing an investment policy revision back to you on the next meeting, so that we can entertain different investments that attract daily interest rates. We have a T bill that's coming due and has to be reinvested, and in discussion with Katie and John, I made a determination that we should stick to a six-month investment on this, only because we have a significant number of things coming forward, probably the next three to six months, that I'd like to see how those are going to play out, and what's the availability. We may have to have some cash available to handle those issues, or to get us started in terms of a loan or grant program. So instead of a usual year or two-year commitment, we're gonna roll to a six-month commitment with this T bill, and then look at it again. I should have a little bit more clarity as things move along, hopefully within the next three, six months. So that's why just such a short period.
All right, and if there's another discussion, can I have a motion then to approve the reinvestment of the maturing T bill? That's number 912797MH7, for six months, in the amount of $1,322,552.54, and that would mature on September 4 of 2025.
I'm making motion to approve the reinvestment of the T bill number 912797, Mike Hotel 7, for six months, in the amount of $1,322,552.54.
Support.
If no other discussion, then roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11, unfinished business, we have 11A, a city commission appointment. First, I'd like to point out, city clerk had told me, there were some wording on the applications that may have been a little bit confusing, but one of the questions about being a registered elector of the city is, are you a registered voter? Somebody may have gotten confused a little bit with the language, but he did, he did make sure that all of the applicants were, in fact, registered voters of the city. So, I'll just make sure that that's clear. And I'd like to thank the three applicants that had applied, you know, an offer to serve the community in this role. Commissioner role is obviously very important. I think all of the applications and all the applicants, they all had knowledge, they all had experience, and I think that they all would have brought benefit to the city, and I'd like to thank everybody for that. And with that, can I have a support to appoint Patricia May to the city commission for a term ending in November 2028?
Support.
Is there any further discussion?
No, I'd like to thank everybody also for putting in, it's a tough job, but it's nice to see people showing interest.
Yeah, having done it myself, it's an uncomfortable process. I want to say, in particular with Tricia, I was excited that it would be potentially someone who's bringing forward a skill we don't quite have already represented, being firmly in, you know, health, emergency services of that nature, would be a good balance.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11B, the Marina Project Phase One review, city manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor. For you today in your packet, you have a rendering of the proposed Phase One of the Marina project. I will tell you that we have kind of, I don't want to be bewitched by this project, it's moving along, but we're having some issues in terms of adjusting it to the budget that we have, availability of grants. So we are going to break this down into three different phases. This is Phase One, and what you're seeing is the addition of the walkways, the cement pavilion area, sidewalks, and some parking along Marine Street as Phase One. And you'll, if you looked at your drawing, or had an opportunity, you'll see other areas that are indicated, as an example, concrete pads for trash receptacles, or seating benches, or things of that nature. Boardwalk, Phase Two. You'll see things that aren't in there that you were familiar with from the first bring of this project out. The, in reviewing these costs, we've gone back and forth with AEW, we decided to remove a number of these different items from this Phase One, and have the city cost them out ourselves. So as an example, the restroom facilities, the pavilion, and the fish station, we're going to bid those out ourselves, and we've already located what we believe are suitable enhancements that will be far below what they budgeted, and will also bring value to the park. So today, what I'm asking is to allow you to review this, if you have any questions for me, but to authorize the bidding of Phase One of this project. We are making arrangements as we secure these bids and see what the cost comes back, how close it is to the engineer subject. We'll determine our next ask, if you will, of the grantors for additional funds in order to complete Phase Two and Phase Three. So I'm available to answer any questions, if you have questions in regards to the drawings or the projected costs.
I noticed that you're getting rid of a couple trees, are they bad, or are they just in a bad location?
Bad location, and most of it has to do with existing water lines, or stuff that's already in the ground that we're gonna keep and use, so those trees have to go.
Plant new ones?
We will add additional trees, and that'll be in Phase Three.
One thing, I see we have extra parking along Main Street there. Can we also, could you also use that, like, if you wanted to ever have a food truck there, if you wanted to have an event?
Sure, we could designate that and block it off and put a food truck there if you wanted.
Maybe, you might need, I don't know if you'd need electrical, I don't know if there's gonna be any electrical.
There will be electrical there. Now, that's one of the things that we added, we kind of foresaw the need for additional parking, and what was on Marine Street wouldn't be enough, especially if we had transient voters utilizing the facility, and other people coming to utilize the pavilion area and enjoy a day. So that's why we added that additional parking on that side, and that's a good use for that, is maybe a food truck, or somebody wanted to rent out that pavilion and use that facility, they'd have that. Other questions?
That was a grant, wasn't it?
It is.
And we still have to follow what the grant said?
Yes, we have to comply with the requirement of the grants, we're a little behind in terms of meeting the grant requirements. There's two or three different organizations that are enjoined in this grant process, so we're trying to play a little catch-up. This will allow us to at least get this out to bid, and hopefully get some type of construction work in Phase One this year.
We just don't want to lose the grant, right?
Correct.
No, we're not deviating from the scope of the grant, we're just a little behind on timing.
Are you gonna, oh, wait, you're missing it somewhere. I didn't see a pad for the, oh, because you might put in, in the meantime, since we're gonna have an outhouse instead of a bathroom probably for a while, are we gonna put a, maybe something for that, or where that's gonna?
Yeah, we'll put the outhouse, we'll rest it right on the pad where the restroom's gonna propose to go.
Okay.
It's easy for them to retrieve it at this point.
Okay.
So tonight, you need the motion to accept the plan as you presented?
So we may.
For Phase One, right?
Pardon?
Just for Phase One, right?
For Phase One only.
To allow the bidding process.
I'm making motion to allow the city manager to proceed with the bidding process for Phase One of the Marina project as presented.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11C, we have the General City Manager Annual Review Policy Discussion.
So, this is a carryover from our last meeting, you asked me to go back and put together a combination of what was presented, I think we presented five or six different variations, and I've come up with two, and it would be my recommendation to the board to consider adopting both, and I will call them appropriately the short form and the long form. So it'll be up to you, or in your discussion with the city manager, what form you choose is appropriate for that evaluation. That way, you'll have two available, and, you know, you can edit them down the road if you decide there's another area you want to add, or take something out, but the short form you might find is good, maybe a mid-year, or whatever reason you determine you want to use the short form. What we did take away was numbers, a number of the commissioners had concerns and issues in terms of how you quantify the numbers, and what's it mean when you come up with a number, and my number three is different than your number three, and those type of things. And most importantly, out of both of them, there's significant space for narrative. I look at this as a 50/50, so it should be 50% the written part, but 50% of the evaluation should be oral, there should be verbal communication back and forth between the both. And I'm available to answer any questions, or if you have any comments on it, or if you'd like me to keep working on it.
I like both the forms, I like the idea of having a short one, even if we do a starting and then a mid-year, and then, you know. Both of them were really good. I guess the thing is, how do we, like, on the longer one, is there still gonna be a way to, I mean, you're gonna have seven different ones, and they're all gonna have different ratings, well, not ratings, they're gonna be, I mean, how are we gonna do that? Each one will be on its own?
Right, so I think what you do is you compile them, and then have a consensus that section Area One, most agree that the work was exceptional, or average, or whatever, whatever it says, I didn't look at it, you know, four out of five, or four out of seven, or whatever it may be, and then, really, there to generate the discussion out of it. What you're looking for in terms, and if there's any areas or issues or concerns, what's positive, what's negative, and how do we move forward into, you know, seeing change or requesting change.
And if we keep these two, which one are we gonna use? Do you need a decision of that, which one we're gonna use to start?
That's your choice, I'm happy with either one, I feel I get evaluated bi-weekly when I get a paycheck, so I have no problem with that, but whatever your choice is. We can do it verbal, we can do it oral, we can use both, we can use one or the other, makes no difference to me.
I'd like to have the option of both of the forms. Can we get a motion then to adopt both forms?
The policy.
What's, for the policy?
Yeah, the policy with both forms. Because we want to have this, this was one of the policies your charter requires.
Okay.
I'm making motion, we adopt the city manager annual review policy, including both the short and long form as presented.
Support. Excuse me.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to 11D, then goal-setting session, discussion.
Yes, we talked a little bit about goals when we started discussing evaluations of the city manager, and I talked to you that it was my opinion, it's difficult to have an evaluation without ever having been given a set of goals, other than just fix things as you find, as you go along, and that's the process we've been utilizing. But I think it's important that the, not only the commissioners and the city manager, but the department heads and the staff are all in agreement, and have input and access to determining the goals. I like to use the SMART Rubik, it's pretty simple, everybody's pretty familiar with those. Specific, define what you want to accomplish, how we're gonna do it, measurable, connect your goals to a metric, so you can tell when you reach them, achievable, make sure they're realistic, so we can accomplish them, realistic set goals that are within reach, and time-bound, what's the deadline in order to achieve them. What I'd like to do is, at the next meeting, have a small goal session, and since this is probably a new practice for this board, and we're bringing on a new trustee, kind of, I don't want to limit our discussion, but try to focus the discussion around five or six different goals that we can kind of hone in on, and I'll give you some ideas that came from staff, myself and a couple others, in regards to possibilities that you consider. Some of them are kind of open-ended, but we could shape those, I think. One is continue the streets, road raising, and infrastructure projects. Maintain the management to complete project, and manage additional needs determined through construction and observation. Now, I can send these to you via email, so you're not writing, but we've got multiple different projects going, that's a goal in itself, and that spans, actually, one of them spans over two years, but out of that project has sprung multiple other projects. The management of those type of activities alone, I think, is a solid goal. How you would measure that success is, we're gonna face things that, and we've already found this out as we go along, how do we deal with them, and how do we adjust our compass in order to deal with these things as they come up. Another one is continue the grants process for the city. So we've, I think you've seen a number of grants applied for, you saw eight to $10 million in earmarks applied for this week, you saw us waiting on other grants, and you've seen us already received some grants, all in a short period of time. I'd like to see us continue that process, and maybe, I'm looking at some specialized grant writers in specific areas. One would be in the area of wastewater treatment facilities, another is in housing, so those, that's just the idea focused around grants. CIP, Citywide Analysis, that's already in progress, but I think what'll need is for you to adopt something, we bring it to you, and then put it into play, actually build a budget and build a process around the CIP plan, so that we understand how we're going to utilize this as a guide for the next five, 10, 15 years, and then we have to candidly put some money where our mouth is, in saying, we know we're gonna face a bit, let's say, a roof on this building in five years, this is what we gotta do, so one of those T bills is coming, we gotta know that's going for capital improvements, and we need a dump truck, we need a police car, and we start that process. Business development, groundwork for future success, there's a whole different category that we could talk about, and we could set some goals in regards to that, I've been working hard on that lately in terms of trying to develop some ideas in regards to business attraction and that, I'll talk about that more. Employee recruitment, retention, training, development, and compensation. I think that's a great goal, and I really think it's critical to the success of the city, and the lack of continuity over the years has really hampered the city's operations in a number of different areas, so I think that's a key factor. You set the goals, though the folks that carry it out, we keep changing the teammates repeatedly, you can't get the goals, so that's something to think about. This is something that came from staff, and I'm all in favor of it, improves the knowledge base between the board and city departments, department heads, employees, what their responsibilities are, what their issues are, so I'm gonna start bringing in employees from different departments, and they're gonna get about five to seven minutes to talk about what they do. What is their job and tail? So, the deputy treasurer, what is she responsible for? What does she do? What's her background? What's the more, what does she need to do her job? So you have an idea of what's behind that, and then the department heads, we hope to establish a little bit different department head report format, so that you have an idea of what's going on, and what the department head is facing in terms of what they're trying to accomplish. So I think that's something that, where if you understand the department heads and the employees and their background, they'll make it be easier to make budget decisions, and also assist them in helping setting goals. Public communication, Jason and I have been tossing this one around, I'd like to get to a point, and he's working hard on it, we'd like to televise meetings in the future. Significant amount of the city doesn't have the ability to physically attend meetings. I think the excuses in the past about why we don't televise meetings have all been debunked. I think it's time that we look into that, and offer that to our citizens, and then it's on-demand, they can watch that, they can see what's going on, I think that's a great communication tool. I think we could do more in that area, of course, there's a cost to that, so we're looking to negate that in terms of grants and other opportunities, but that's something we could talk about. Consideration of town hall meetings and a variety of different projects are topics. Very scoped, if you will, town halls that are specific in nature to certain things, I'm not talking a free-for-all, but specific to certain things, I think would be critical. Very candidly, the explanation of the water project, and what it entails, and what it's gonna cover in that. We try to do that now through website updates and door hangers. We try to do that now through website updates and door hangers, but so much misinformation is out there, it makes it difficult to combat. So something like that, at least we're making the opportunity, and if it's televised, maybe somebody out there is watching it. A couple more I plan on taking on, and I want to make them part of the goals. I want to bring back that vacant building ordinance and let's work on it. It's in moratorium, it's been in moratorium for a number of years here. Let's decide what we're going to do with it. And I think it needs to be changed. I looked at it, it needs work. I think there's some bones there that can work with. I think we have to understand what's the objective you want to achieve with it. I think there's mixed messages with it, but that's one. A complete ordinance review and cleanup. Very candidly, some of our ordinances don't meet your fee schedule. You set your budget based on the fee schedule, but the ordinance has a different amount. So if you're expecting $100, but the ordinance is $50, we go with the ordinance says, not the fee schedule. They should coincide as much as possible. And last but not least, on my end, is a walkability assessment. I think it's always important that we look to resurrect, we did a little bit of that the last meeting. Let's talk about sidewalk assessment in terms of what do we want to accomplish. I don't care if we accomplish one street at a time, but let's make the city more walkable. Let's repair walks where we can, and if it's a block at a time, that's how we have to do it, then that's how we have to do it. But I think it's a good discussion, and it enhances the city and enhances the quality of life in the city. And, you know, that's an improvement that lasts over multiple years. So those are some goals that I have. I'm asking you to think about it. I'd like you to shoot me some ideas. I'll throw them into the Tumblr, and then we'll lay them back out and be prepared at the next meeting to have a discussion, and we'll pick five out of there and shape them in some form or manner and see if we come up with something. Is that what you're looking for in terms of goals?
Yep.
For me, it is, absolutely. You already took a bunch of mine, but thank you.
I was prepared.
I've done this once or twice. Is that, is that okay?
Yep, absolutely. On to new business, 12A, we have resolution 007-2025, that's the Guy Center dedication. Have a motion to approve resolution 007-2025, that's the resolution dedicating the property located at 545 Ward Street as the Guy Community Center per the Guy family will.
Make a motion we approve resolution 007-2025.
Support.
Motion and support.
Just a question, the one in the packet says 14, 2016.
Yeah, let's have to have that corrected on there.
Long overdue.
It's a little late there. All right, just so that that gets corrected.
Where's, where's it at?
At the top.
In the title.
Right in the title.
Yeah, we, okay, we got it.
Okay.
It's normally something Rita would catch.
Yes. She kept reading the resolution, I'm going, well, that doesn't match this.
We'll blame that on Bob.
Any other discussion? Here, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12B, that's the personnel policies and procedures, and that's the Earned Sick Time Act addition. Can I have a motion to approve the addition of the Earned Sick Time Act addition to the personnel policies and procedures as presented?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion?
If I can offer, this is just one section that's going to amend just that area in terms of part-time employees. You're going to get shortly here, within the next two meetings, the complete Personnel Policy Guide revision. This will be included in it, but we were waiting for the legislature to finish their work in terms of, so we had to get this included, it was, I think it was the 21st of February was effective, so hence the reason why you're getting this as a piece.
The legislature didn't do a lot of favors on this one, but we don't have a choice, this has to get in there now.
Okay, nothing else, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, 12C for the computer use policy, can I have a motion to approve the computer use policy as presented?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions on this one here. Presumably, Section 6, Social Media and External Communication, which begins on page four, I'm guessing these were maybe cobbled together or lifted, but once we get to number D, it switches from talking about employees to you. You may not, you must not, you must not.
Jason, I, I didn't write this one.
This is mine.
This grew out of the city. This is not a policy that's required by your charter, but we all, three, at this end, believed there was a policy that needed to get done. So the city manager and the clerk put this together.
That makes sense.
This arises out of the board direction when we were having discussions in terms of a number of different issues over the past month, and us having the need for a computer and computer use policy. I threw this out, and thank you for catching it, as a draft first to get your input. I knew there'd be some areas that are new to you in terms of how you would interpret them or how you want to interpret them, especially in terms of social media. And I did send it to Bob because those are one of my concerns in terms of responses in social media as a city, our city policy versus you as individuals and that type of thing.
But Sean, you're raising an issue of semantics and consistency, right?
Yeah, and that, that, that will fix that. I've got, I've got two more that are relatively small as well, not semantic-based.
D and E.
Secondly, for Section 8 on page five, breaches and complaints, presumably any whistleblower policies would supersede most other policies, I would imagine.
Yes.
But we don't have anything like that embedded on here, in which this is restricting how city employees are using, like, electronic devices that we're providing for them. But should a situation arise where one needs to whistleblow, presumably, we can't like, I mean, there's, there's a certain limit about restricting their access to information that they have to whistleblow on and how that would work, and how does it interact with this policy?
I'm going to, I'll, I'll have to take a look at that one for, for the staff here, for Jason and the city manager. I can tell you, just responding to you here, that the whistleblower rights and abilities is going to trump local use policies. But how we incorporate that, I'll have to take a look at.
Great, thank you. And then, there's been some Supreme Court discussion in the past about public officials, representatives, and social media, and how this works, and one of the things that we carve out here is, in situations where an individual can be construed as acting as a city representative, right, when they're making posts or comments, is there any guidelines you can provide on not acting as a city representative?
Yes.
We're in a very political age, people are very politically active, how do we draw that distinction?
This is, we will take a, yes, there are, there are some rulings on that. It's very difficult, it's, and you guys are very well aware of this, when you're out speaking, whether or not you're speaking, Lisa, are you speaking for Lisa, or do you have a commissioner's hat on as the words are coming out? And it's a difficult situation for, for you in general, that can put you in a very precarious position, where sometimes your audience, it doesn't matter, they, Lisa, most people in the city see you as a commissioner, because you've been on the commission for 84 years. And so when you speak, you know, it's difficult for people to distinguish between, is that Lisa speaking or a commissioner speaking, but I think we need to address it, Sean, as you're saying. There's no hard and fast rule that has come out from the Supreme Court where, where, Bill, you could say, I'm now speaking as Bill, and then, and then, and then five minutes later, you're back speaking as a commissioner, right? It's very, it's very, there's no hard and fast rule for that. So we're going to have to take a look at that wording. I appreciate that comment, though. And it goes, it goes all the way down to the police chief, department heads, you know, when are they speaking as a, as a citizen, and when are they speaking as a, as a politician, right? And, and what you want to be, be careful with is, when, Jay, if you say something, you know, a lot of people are going to think, that's the city's position. And that may be your position, but that may not be the city's position. And that's why, a lot of times, you have to keep educating the community that the, that the city speaks through its decision, its decisions at its meetings. When you vote, when you vote, you end up having a position on a topic. Whether the vote is unanimous or split, the outcome is the position of the city, right? Three to two, five to two, whatever it is, the outcome becomes the position of the city. Your position along the way could be different. So we have to, we have to manage that, and I agree with you that in today's climate, that is a huge issue that we have to contend with.
There, there's a nature in this about, you know, the comments being made that, like, you can't disparage the city or city employees, which is, I'm very happy with this.
Yes.
However, we're also in a unique political climate in which disagreements have been construed as disrespectful in themselves, right? Holding a different position at various levels in our society right now, this is coming out. And I'm, I'm a little nervous that the direction this is heading in can limit certain discourse and/or, you know, I, I don't quite see us infringing on freedom of speech here, it's very much in an employee capacity.
Right.
But just being judicious and careful with this approach, that we're getting it right.
These are difficult.
Yeah.
In today's climate, disagreement can translate quickly to you're a bad person.
Yeah.
Right? So we have to, we'll, we'll take a closer look at that, and we wanted to get this, I know the city manager wanted to get this thing moving and get this dialogue going.
That's exactly what we were hoping for, was the dialogue back from you. We're trying not to be restrictive in nature, but have the conversation so you could kind of give us the feedback to what you're looking for.
I mean, have some of you been in that position where you're, you're asked a question and you, you, you have to make sure, you know, out in public, this is just my opinion, this is not, and you find yourself having to clarify, I'm not speaking for the city as a whole, I'm just telling you what I think. And, and the blessing of having this commission is, we hope and your community hopes, that you all come here with different thoughts.
Does have some social media stuff in it, though.
And that they get mashed together into final decisions. So we'll have to take a look at that.
I have seen, I have seen people in this position post, in other communities, they'll post a statement saying that, you know, these are my opinions or my opinions, not that of the entire board, and then they go on to whatever, you know. I've seen them do that.
Yeah, so it's, but there's, like I said, there's no hard and fast line that if you say this, then you're now, that you're not speaking for the body. You know, there's no hard and fast rule that has come down, that what that magic language is.
So if you have something you want to sentence me, I'll forward it to Bob. I'm not a, a user of social media, I, I only go there when I need to find an expert. So I don't generally are taking that, but I understand that other people are.
We have to, it's very.
Yeah, utilize it daily, and I just want to set something our staff understands, and it's all in the use of city websites and city property and city, that type of thing.
Yeah, it's not, it's not extenuating to them on their personal devices.
No.
Right.
But that great area of can you be misconstrued as representing the city could make that a little tricky for some of this.
Right.
But I, I think, I mean, private sector employers are also looking at various statements like this because of damage and problems that can arise out of what people are doing online as well. So, I mean, I understand, and I, I want a policy like this. I think we really need it.
Yeah.
I think it's also important to protect our employees from harassment and slander.
We'll work on the formatting as well. We didn't, we didn't think this was going to be a one, a one-nighter.
One and done.
And it, because it touches on some difficult issues.
Would you prefer we table this for a meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We want, we want this to come back.
I will make a motion that we table the computer use policy until our next meeting.
Support.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12D for zoning board of appeals appointment. Can I have a support to appoint Dan Moore to the zoning board of appeals for a term ending December of 2026?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I, I think that, you know, we, we, three times, because I have the materials, we've had zoning board of appeals training sessions. I've watched the composition change enough now where I think that we should schedule that. I'll, I'll put something into the city manager. What we do is we, you don't get a lot of ZBA hearings, but the law and the court decisions coming down on ZBA decisions, Bill, as you know, requires that the ZBA be pretty skilled in how they handle hearings and how they make motions and how they grant and deny variances that affect property rights. So we should probably, with the composition, I'll work with the city manager to set a ZBA training session. We come with a manual, I invite the commissioners to come and listen in. Couple of you have come in the past. We usually eat pizza, so it's got some attractiveness. And we go over, we go over the ZBA's role, looking at it as if we're in court and working ourselves backwards to the decision at the meeting. So we start like we're in court, and we work ourselves backwards. It's, it's an effective lesson. Thanks.
Yeah, you, with the ZBA, you know that they can take it to circuit court if, so it automatically goes.
ZBA is a quasi-judicial branch of your government. It's, it's the one body in local government that can overrule you who set an ordinance. When you think about a variance, a variance is a deviation from an ordinance that you passed. That's the way you got to look at variances, and so it's quasi-judicial and it's one step before court.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Roll call.
No, I think you already, you already voted.
I'm sorry.
I just went on, I went on so long you forgot.
Okay, so we're going to E now, which is the Arts History and Culture Commission appointments. I just have one question in regards to Genevieve Prang as being one. Is she going to be as far as the Historical Commission representative or one of the other groups?
No, I, I did receive clarification earlier. The two applicants you have this evening, Georgia Phelan will be the Historical Society member.
Okay.
And Genevieve Prang will be just one of the citizen-at-large positions, I guess we could call it.
All right.
The Historical Commission did appoint one of their own members at a special meeting last week.
Okay.
Kim Turner took that one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, can I have a support to appoint Georgia Phelan to the Arts History and Culture Commission as the Historical Society member?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and can I support down to appoint Genevieve Prang to the Arts History and Culture Commission as a citizen-at-large member?
Support.
Discussion?
Do I need to recuse from voting? She's my partner. Does it matter for this?
No.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Unless she pays you a salary.
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabush?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 13, administrative reports, and we have the city attorney report.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, city manager report?
I'm good, I've sent you a report earlier today.
Thank you. And reports.
I do have a few things.
Okay.
I promise that there gets gonna be lengthy, but I promise you will not hear from me at the next commission meeting. This is a great segue, is I will not be here for the next city commission meeting. I'll be away at the Clerks Institute all that week for year two of that training, year two of three. Deputy Clerk Carol Brown will be here clerking the meeting, so please, all of you treat her fairly and nice. I have the utmost confidence in her that she'll be able to do a great job, so just take it easy on her, please. With that, too, there are a couple of trainings that I've completed within the last month. I've taken a training through the ICMA, which was Assistant City Administration Official Boot Camp. It was a three-part webinar series, 90 minutes apiece, just kind of networking, connecting with managers or assistant city administrators around the country, kind of getting ideas of how to manage your roles as department heads or an assistant city administrator. Also took part in a ICMA Coach Connect training on Tuesday. It's a free class or sessions through the ICMA. You get 12 credits a year for free, and you can connect with different city managers, county managers, different officials from around the country that have different areas of expertise for a half-hour, hour webinar with them, kind of pick their brains, network with them, and it's kind of like a mentoring program, so you can pick different ones every month that you meet with them. But very enlightening to see some different ideas from around the country. So I look forward to continue doing that as well. Reminder, Community Shred Day, April 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And as a reminder for that, we'll be collecting items for Easter baskets to help support the Maritime Days Easter Extravaganza on the 19th. Just bring your papers to shred and some Easter basket items to help support the children at that event. The Guy Center projects, we're making progress on that. As city manager announced at the last meeting, we received the $25,000 grant from the Community Foundation for some security measures at the Guy Center to include an alarm system, access control, fire systems. They are starting that next Wednesday, gonna start some pre-wiring for that and get that started. Hopefully, that'll be completed here by the end of the month or mid-April, and then we can move on to our next project over there. It's coming along. Things are, things are coming along nicely, and it looks good, and we're getting rentals in as well for that. Which brings me to my next topic, the reservations page. If you have used our reservations, reservations page to book a reservation at the Guy Center, the Mariner Park Pavilion, or the Bandstand, we're looking for some feedback on how that system is working, how you felt the ease of use was, or if it wasn't easy to use. We want to hear from you. I send myself an email, clerk@marinescity.gov, or you can reach out to Deputy Clerk, which is deputyclerk@marinescity.gov, or you can call that same old-fashioned Lions Club phone number, 765-9121. We just want to hear from you. This is, this is something that, you know, we built out in, over a couple months. We're working on it on our end. There are some issues from administrative side, but we kind of want to hear from users as well to see how that's working for them. One more, couple more things. Business license renewals, as of today, we're at 98% compliance rate on renewals, which is really good over previous years. Lack of better terms, we've been chasing business owners down well into April in years past to get their licenses renewed. And that 98% is a little misleading, out of 198 businesses, I think we have in town, 196 renewals. So we're waiting on two. So that 98%, I mean, it's good, but we're only waiting on two. So hopefully, we'll get those renewals here within the next week, and we'll be good with that at 100%. Also wanted to mention, there are still some board vacancies available, mainly on the Arts History and Culture Commission. There are a few positions that need to be filled from the city commission standpoint, the Chamber of Commerce, and then some Citizen-at-Large positions. I'll post those along with a couple others now that we still have open as well. I did meet with a citizen today that came in and asked some questions on the different boards and how they operated and kind of what they worked towards. So I welcome that. If you want to come in and have a conversation, I'm open to that. I'm sure the city manager is open to that as well when he's available. But if you have questions, call us, come in. We'll walk you through it, and we'll kind of give you an idea of what those boards serve the residents in doing. And last but not least, I'm going to bewitch you with another nice flyer. We put this out today over Facebook and, well, not our city website yet, but the city now with owning the Guy Community Center, which we're going to get used to calling it, I guess. We're gonna take over the farmer's market that has been there for the last few years. The city will run operations on that. That flyer is out. It's gonna be $5 per booth per week, running from July 10th through October 2nd. If you're interested in that, there's an email at the bottom of the flyer, mcfarmersmarket@marinescity.gov, or call that same old-fashioned Lions phone number, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. We're excited for this. It's something new for myself. I've never ran a farmer's market. Carol has never ran a farmer's market, but we're learning as we go. And the group that we met with already, that's kind of been a part of this for a few years, is coaching us along, giving us, you know, ideas and that, and we want the feedback from them as well. So we kind of want to make this grow, get as big as Marysville's is, Port Huron has their own now. So if you're interested in that, please reach out, and we'll get you on our list, and hopefully have an informational meeting in May for that, and hopefully have a great farmer's market throughout the summer.
On the, on the business registrations, these guys developed a good approach with, starting with like a level-one phone call and then a level-one letter. We got a stronger letter that we developed, and I think they have a good system in place to get, remind people to get those in. Your ordinance is pretty strict about it.
Okay. On to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
We had a planning commission meeting, and there was only one on there, and it was a remod of a building that has been vacant for quite a few years downtown and is gonna be revamped. So that will be taken care of. The other thing is, we, I just think that the DPW needs a lot of praise for what they're doing in this kind of weather, and I've never seen this many water breaks in one year. And it's not just here, it's all over, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryson?
I'd just like to thank everyone who applied, not only for the city commissioner's seat, but also for all the subboards that we still need, and there are still vacancies out there. So again, please, thank you for volunteering, thank you for putting in an application. So that's it.
Commissioner O'Brien?
I'll echo the praise for DPW, how dangerous of a job that is getting into those holes. I'll echo the praise and gratitude for everyone who applied. Like I said, I've done that. It's, it's not really a, it's a very strange thing to come up in front of the city as you like kind of apply for something. That's a very strange thing to do, so thank you for everyone who did. We recently lost Dave Simpson, and I want to take a moment to comment about him. For anyone who has ever involved in Marine City High School's theater productions or music productions, and were at the Performing Arts Center, Dave inevitably played a integral role. And when you're a teen, a young individual, and you're coming through school, and you're finding yourself, and you come across one of these people who encourages you to be you and is a capable mentor like he was to so many, he just blessed many lives and touched many lives. He served on this commission, he was an individual who understood service, service to your community, to your fellow human beings, and he just kept giving, and that was always something that was very moving and impressive. And I've carried with me since I first met him quite a few years ago now. He shared his battle online and with the community, and that was something we all walked with him, either close to him or from afar, but we got to see that carry out, and it was very heartbreaking losing this man. If you get a chance to know the people who knew him, you're gonna carry a piece of him with you. So, you know, to Dave, thank you for all you've done, and to his family, make you be the oneses. That's all.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'll reiterate a lot of what's going on down there, and Dave Simpson, too. I was on the board with Dave, and you didn't have to agree with him, but he was always great to work with. He always could work with you no matter what. I mean, it was, he had a great position on this board, and he is gonna be really missed because he was a really good guy. I do want to thank our staff and the city manager for, people have no idea how much he's had to get done and accomplish lately along with our staff, and it's not an easy job sometimes. People throw wrenches in there, and you have to deal with that, so it makes it difficult for our workers sometimes to try to get their job done and then have to deal with other things that, you know, they shouldn't have to deal with. So I just want to thank them all. They, they just do a fantastic job, and our DPW, it's, it's a, can be a real miserable job out there. And I want to welcome Trish, and I'm sure anybody on this board, whatever you need or any questions, I know everybody up here will be more than happy to help you. Yeah, no, we welcome you. That's it.
All right. Just a couple of things, actually, just kind of repeating what other people have said. Thank you to our city employees for everything that you guys do. And again, with our DPW, that job is very hard, and they've had a lot of, a lot to deal with recently, everything, and thank you for all their hard work. Thank you for everybody who applied for positions, whether it was the commission or these other boards. Appreciate your volunteering for that. It is very difficult to do, and I just appreciate everybody coming forward. And if you maybe weren't selected for one board, if you'd please think about any of the other openings that we have on the other boards. And I'd also like to give my condolences to the family of Dave Simpson. He did a great job on the city commission. I also had the privilege of serving with him on the board for a teen zone for a period of time, and he was a great human, a great person, and he will be sadly missed. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?